...Thursday, December 29, 2016, New Brunswick City Council. We have no ordinances on second reading. We have no ordinances on first reading. We have resolutions. 671, approved agenda amendments. 672, approved payroll. 673, authorized refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. 674, approved amendment and resolution R.121-606. Extension of contract for one additional year of municipal payroll services with Pride Food LLC. Terms of 12-month period commencing January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017. Not to exceed $65,000. 675, approved amendment and resolution R.101-309. Reason to pay additional copy charges for the year 2016 amount of $320 for Division of Recreation's office copier. With Rico USA Incorporated not to exceed $320, approval of this amendment will not constitute an increase of 20 percent or more than now of the original contract. 676, resolution authorizing budget transfer for 2016 municipal budget. 677, approved amendment resolution R.061-524. Reason to pay an additional amount of $1,421.05 for EverTech Engineering Incorporated for professional engineering and survey services in connection with proposed police inbound hot. Not to exceed $1,421.05. 678, approved amendment resolution R.121-612. To pay $67,729.06 for repair of water main for breaks for the water utility with D. and W. Construction Co., New Jersey. For equipment and labor not to exceed $67,729.06. Approval of this January will constitute an increase of 20 percent or more of the amount of the original contract. 679, approved amendment resolution R.021-641. Pay outstanding invoices the amount of $5,000 with Core Mechanical Corporation. Temperature control HVAC maintenance and repairs not to exceed $5,000. Approval of this amendment will not constitute an increase of 20 percent or more of the amount of the original contract. 680, approved resolution of appreciation for council member Elizabeth S. Garlotti. 681, approved order contract with N. Court LLC for credit card processing for municipal court fees and financial obligations. Terms of three-year period commencing December 30, 2016, and ending December 29, 2017. Not to exceed $75,285 fair and open. 682, approved amendment of resolution R.121-648. Pay additional $1,953.74 with Central Jersey Collision Blue Business as Elizabeth Truck Center for water bottom repairs for $2,005,435 goshen for dial rod. Not to exceed $1,953.74. This Millsacks County Cooperative Purchasing Program CK-12 Millsacks from Central Jersey Collision Blue Business as Elizabeth Truck Center. 683, resolution authorizing cancellation of various outstanding checks. 684, approved amendment of resolution R.121-641. Pay additional funds for 2016 employee health benefit claims with Aetna Healthcare additional and POTS. Term July 1, 2016, June 20, June 30, 2017. Amount is $150,000. No words discussed by the council. And now we begin the meeting. For call orders.
Councilmember Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Escobar.
Present.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Present.
Councilmember Garlotti.
Present.
Council President Egan.
Present.
Please be advised that notice required for the Open Public Meetings Act has been complied with and satisfied that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of time and place and time of the public means of the municipal council in the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on appropriate bulletin board in the locker of city hall in Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper in the city of New Brunswick, namely The Home News Tribune. Please stand for the pleasure of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Of a moment of silence for our men and women serving our armed forces, for all our men and women in our forces who lost their lives in the battle, and for everybody to have a happy and healthy new year. Thank you. We have a plaque that we'd like to present to Councilwoman Garlotti, as you know, is retiring at the end of today's last meeting. She's been an outstanding council member for the city of New Brunswick. I'd like to present this to her at this time. Give her a round of applause, please. I sincerely thank Councilwoman Garlotti for her years of dedicated service. She's been an outstanding member, a good voice of reason, and I'm proud that we have served with her. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have minutes from October 19, 2016. Can I get a motion on the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Call call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobar.
Aye.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Garlotti.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Aye. We have resolutions 671 through 684. Anybody from the public but the comment.
The Council President, if I can interrupt.
Yes.
With respect to the consent agenda, with respect to the resolution of the TED, you might want to have that read aloud, and I know Mr. Hamilton's prepared to read it if you'd like that in the air.
Sure. Mr. Hamilton, would you like to have the public vote or Mr. Hamilton? Mr. Hamilton, would you like to read number 10, and we'll vote, we'll have comments, and we'll vote on that.
You mean number 80?
80, exactly.
It's an honor and a pleasure. Whereas Elizabeth S. Betsy Garlotti is retiring from her career as a member of the New Brunswick City Council. Whereas Betsy Garlotti has served as a member of the city council since February 2005, having been appointed to the vacancy occasioned by the resignation of Councilmember Joseph Schrum. Whereas Betsy Garlotti's council career was in some ways a natural phenomenon. Betsy is the daughter of Lady Daniela Scheen, who served as a city commissioner from July 10, 1961 until his death on December 10, 1961. And also a daughter of Patricia K. Scheen, who was elected as city commissioner in May 1967 and thereafter as mayor under the mayor council former government from 1971 to 1974. And whereas Betsy herself has served in a variety of leadership roles on council, having been chosen by her colleagues as council vice president in 2005 and 2006, and as council president in 2007, 2008, 2009, and 2010. Also has served as a member of the planning board since becoming a member of the council. And whereas as a member of the city planning board since 2005 to the present, Betsy's been very effective in providing guidance in the redevelopment of the city. Throughout her council service, Betsy has always been concerned with and interested in neighborhood matters and the interests of residents in all the neighborhoods of the city. And whereas the leadership and instructor advice of Betsy Garlotti during her service on council has been a positive inspiration to her colleagues, and has resulted in significant contributions to the city's residents who will miss her dedication for their welfare. Now therefore be resolved by the city, by the New Brunswick City Council. That the members of council express their appreciation to Elizabeth B. Betsy Garlotti for her diligent service as a member of city council for 12 years. Their sense of loss has resulted in reports from council. Their best wishes for continued success and fulfillment both in professional and personal life, and their sincere hope that in the future she again will offer her service to the people of New Jersey. And be a further result of this resolution being grossed in the permanent records of council, and the certified copy of this resolution be presented to councilwoman Elizabeth B. Betsy Garlotti with a deep appreciation and sincere affection of her fellow council members.
Thank you. I would ask for a public comment on all the resolutions 671 through 684. Why don't we just move to that particular one, and then we'll vote on that on Saturday?
Do that.
Do that, Mr. Secretary.
You can do that.
Okay, I would like to honor you. Just on that particular resolution, Mr. Cradville, sir.
Certainly. I also want to thank Councilwoman Garlotti for her service, and I know we don't always agree, but I do respect the work you've done and the service that you've done for the city. And I think that whoever is the next council president would be wise to look at how the councilwoman ran the meetings when she was the council president. And I think that she proudly gave out her home phone number to anyone who wanted it. And she, there was a level of discourse that I think has sadly declined since those days. I think there was no need for a five-minute rule back then, and it was a healthy discourse, and everyone could speak. And she would not always agree with you, but she would respect people's speech, and I think for the next council president she should do that. And I also do want to thank her for, on the few occasions that we did agree, she did follow through on what she said, and did introduce resolutions, and did get crosswalks painted and other things that I brought to the council's attention. So I want to thank you for the work you've done, and I look forward to seeing you around town.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Anybody else on that particular resolution? See nobody else? In a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Call call, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobar.
Aye.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Garlotti.
I think I need proof of statement. Just guessing.
Council President Egan.
Aye. Now we'll have a public comment from all the other resolutions. That would be 671 to 684 excluding 680, which we just voted on. Anybody who'd like to speak on those particular resolutions? Anybody at all? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm trying to learn a little bit about how tax sales work. I see resolution 3 is the refund for redeemed tax sale certificates. Are you sure the city just had a tax sale, like last week or week before?
Mr. Pettis here, who wants to make a comment? Yes, there you go.
Council President, that is a true statement. Last, on the 21st of December, we did hold an accelerated tax sale.
Okay. And I read in the legal notices of a newspaper called The Home News Tribune here, and I look through, I like to look through the tax sales and see who owes the most money to the government. And I was surprised to see owing $391,000 was the New Brunswick Housing Authority. Can anybody speak to that? Why the biggest tax scoff law in town is the housing authority? How is that possible? Have they paid that?
On the resolutions.
Or was there a lien against?
Please stick to the resolutions.
I'm asking about the tax sale. It just happened. This was in the paper, and my question's about the tax sale.
No, your question's about the housing authority.
My question's about the housing authority not paying their taxes, water, and sewer to the $391,000 and being the biggest scoff law in the city.
I don't think that has nothing to do with the refund for redeemed tax sales.
Does it?
Does it?
I don't know, does it? I mean, you're asserting that it doesn't. I heard there was a tax sale. I got a copy of the paper here, and I'm asking you about the number-one tax scoff law. That's a pretty sizable amount. Do they still owe that, or have they paid that? Is that a reasonable question to ask?
You have to look to the housing authority. I said that, they would have the answer. I would have that answer at this time. Try to stick to the resolutions, sir. Thank you.
I think the city should know if they're owed $391,000 by the housing authority. Isn't that a reasonable thing to expect, that somebody would know that in this room?
Sounds pretty reasonable. Does anybody owe me answer from Mr. Cradville?
I can tell you that they have made their water and sewer accounts current prior to the tax sale. I believe fourth quarter water and sewer is outstanding, but that is not in arrears at this point. And there is an interest, there is a running interest amount that is still due to the city. I don't know the exact number. But all water and sewer charges were brought current through the third quarter of 2016.
And so was there, was there a sale for that? Was there a lien sold against the housing authority? Or were they taken off the list and taken out of the mix?
I don't believe they went to lien. They were not, they were not in arrears at that point.
Mr. Pettis? Council President, that's a true statement, as Mr. Loughton said. In order to be able to sell something at the tax sale, it has to be delinquent, and that fourth quarter was technically not delinquent at the time of the tax sale.
So they're up to speed now?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to ask about this water main break, number eight. Which main break was this?
Record.
Yes, actually, this is going to actually cover two breaks that were rather large. We had one that was on Joyce Kilmer on one of our 20-inch transmission mains. The other one was in relationship to work that we had done on Pennington and Tunison. We had two valves that needed to be replaced there. The issue was with that. There's also the, what I call the jet fuel line that runs right through that area. So it was a very delicate operation. We needed to bring in a larger firm to get the work done.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on the resolutions? Anybody? See nobody?
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobar.
Aye.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Garlotti.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Now move to the public portion of the meeting. If anybody has any comment from council? You have five minutes. Please stretch, we have five minutes to address the council.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, 188 Rutherford Street. Today I'm here for something a little different, other than safety today. If I may pass you out a paper, this fills with a water bill with the landlord, if I can, maybe if you could pass it around. If I can have an inspector or someone that can come to 188 Rutherford Street, due to where, this is a location where a tenant has never been responsible to have to pay for a water bill. At the price of, a person's paying for a one-bedroom, and then he's trying to say, "We have to pay the water bill." That's if you can see where the water bill is $6,496 for that time. And as you can see, for example, A6, where he's going to say that I use $350 worth of water for seven days, but if you look at the water bill, that water bill is only from August to November. And how he's trying to make each tenant pay a proportion of that water bill without separate meters? Like I said, if it's possible, can I have someone from the water department, maybe Mr. Boylen? Due to where, on the paper, when you get a chance to read, he said that he has approved this, where we have to, if we don't pay this proportion of the bill, how Mr. Katz is saying that everyone has to get out? So is it possible I can set up an appointment for someone to approve these new meters in the apartment?
Who do you speak to with the water department? Anybody?
That was where I had spoke to Mr. Boylen about it. That was where he said he was going to give back to me about it, and he never did. And like I said, due to where I was told about these new meters, that they're not registered with the city. So how are, are we going to be cheated? What, pay our rent, what, over $1,053 plus, what, $300 for a water bill? Oh my, I didn't even, if I were to take a shower two times a day at Joyce Kilmer, the bill was never like that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. If I could speak to this issue. I have just some vague familiarity with the case that's involved here. And really, just for the record, okay? This account is up to date. Everything's paid on the account. It has one meter that is owned by the city that meters the entire complex. And that's as far as the city involvement goes. We have a connection to the building. It has a meter. What the owner does on everything on the other side of that meter is totally up to him, and the plumbing inspectors that go on, but my understanding is that he set up what they call sub-meters, so he could measure the flow to each individual unit in the complex. Having reviewed the flow data with that particular unit, he usually averages about 450 units per quarter. Late in spring, there seemed to be an uptick in usage, and then that usage really got extreme, like in August in the last quarter of this year. So my recommendation, if I had spoken to the owner, would be to get inside each one of the apartments and make sure you change out the flapper in the toilet tank. That's usually the number-one culprit of what's going on. Having looked at the data that you guys have in front of you there, which is not official data, it's really, the way it's recorded has nothing to do with the way we record our data. We measure everything in cubic feet. That seems to be measured in gallons, and everything is confused. But as I explained to Ms. Moore, looking at the data, if you go down and you look at the numbers, anything that's over 450, I'm willing to say it has a leaky toilet flapper. And so it appears this guy went to great expense to find out what the leaks were and why he had such a high water bill. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, sir. The lease that you have, you pay for heat, water, electric, or is it just one?
That's where we only pay for heat, PSN D though.
So it doesn't say that you'll pay for water?
That's where it said, okay, if a person uses it extremely overboard. But see, my point is, due to where, how could you tell that which person did it if he just put these meters in? As it says, shows you on the paper, what, November 30th, this bill is up from August to 11/10. And like I said, due to where, I'd like to know what could be done. Like I said, due to where I didn't show Mr. Boylen the paper yet.
What has to be done is you have to get together with your landlord, the people that are your landlord. The city is responsible for the water up to the meter. After the meter, it's up to between the tenant and the owner of the building. As far as usage, what you agreed to or not agreed to in your lease, if there's a leak in your apartment, or somebody's apartment that's causing this water, it's on these toilets leaking, maybe your own toilet, you're going to have to talk to the landlord and find out what's going on with the usage inside the building.
Okay, so there's no way that I can get someone from the water department to come down and inspect with these meters that he has?
No. It's a private building. We just said that whatever they put in from the inside of one side of the meter is private property. We just can't subjectively go in there and inspect what he's putting in. You're going to have to talk to the meter. You're going to have to talk to the landlord and find out what he's doing there. The city is responsible for up to the water meter.
Okay.
And you got to find out if there's a leak there, or what kind of meters he's putting in for the flow, and how's he determine it, and why you're being charged so much. You're only one single person, you can't be using that much water.
Exactly.
So why should you be paying that much?
Well, okay, thank you for your help.
Please, I would suggest. How many questions in there is of Tennessee, or in these, or if the Fort Worth National Board has a housing unit, and legal services also, that they might be able to help you to review and see if you said standard lease and that everything is according to the law, and check and see if they could advocate with you in that sense.
Well, that's where I have the paper, the signed paper stating with the water department, where they did give me the paper stating he pays the water bill.
But you have to look at the lease and see what, a little bit more and see what I was saying. So I would suggest, just recommendation, just to see somebody else to look at it and see if they can help you with that in the matter.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just a question, how do you know it's an estimate bill, or is it a complete reading? So how do you know that? To me, the Boylen, I'm sorry, I want to.
Are you done?
Yeah, just saying.
Come on to the microphone, sir, if you want to talk, introduce yourself, who you are.
Yes, hi, I'm Elizabeth Swallow, I used to work for the water utility. Just a lot of people.
Just working here?
For the utility, right there in the basement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, working, okay.
Yeah, water utility. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I need a help mentally. I'm really shocked with all this huge, huge, huge problem with the water utility. And I'm a witness of a bunch of irregularities, irregularities, while I report to Mr. Channy, the director. Well, turns out, I was hired by the city of New Brunswick, by you guys, on a three-month period of tests, or just whatever you guys call that. I learned the system with Mr. Boylen, and I was, everything was fine. I passed all my checks, driving records on every single thing. I learned the system, all the water meter system, I really master it. Sorry about my English, it's just not a hundred, I didn't born here in the United States, this beautiful country. But it's like my new country, and I'm here to put it through. And I'm worried, I'm really wonder about the quality of water, the way, the way these things being handled, the way the city hall treated, I mean, actually, Mr. Boylen and the water department treated me. I report every single thing to Mr. Channy and Mr., how do you pronounce your name, sir?
Blackwell.
Blackwell?
Blackwell.
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 Blackwell. Do you remember?
I certainly do.
Yeah, all right. Well, just like I said before, I report a lot of irregularities in the water department, including, I report to Mr. Detective Morepapas. He knows about the thing. Well, you guys have all the videos on every single thing, and never goes, never goes public, everything goes sweep into the. And I spoke also about the meters, the situation about the meters. Anyway, it's a hell of a department. I can't believe what happened to me and what happened to a lot of people in that department. Some people deserve it, some people don't. I don't want to be graphic, but it's a department where when people don't like you, they basically, I mean, it's going to be hard. They shit on the trash cans, and they eat in the trash can, and they put it right in the bottom of your desk. I report this to Mr. Morepapas. I report to the lawyers. I make videos of it. I have another thing to say about all the service about the meters. Whatever happened with Mr. Joe DeBonis of Mr. William, William Quinones?
Ortiz.
Ortiz, sorry. Mr. Ortiz is the tip of the iceberg. It really is more, it's more, more than that. It's really, I want to know where that's all the metal goes, all the meters that have been taken from all the properties in New Brunswick, where those meters are. I hear Mr. Charlie is going to be in trouble because they say it's a stolen meter. I don't think it's a stolen meter. I mean, well, somebody stole, but I think those meters ended in a trash, cr- what's the name of those places? Cracked metal places? And somebody took the money. Because what I, I used to have the key of the deposit on Burness Street, and I know for sure, I noticed something weird when I put all them bunch of meters right there, all the metal carrying on a minivan, they disappeared, and nobody told me nothing. And I suspect a couple of things, I would like to spoke to my lawyer, because I don't want to be in trouble. I know you guys, a lot of lawyers right here, and I don't know how, you know, things could be twisted. But, you know, Mr. Boylen attitude really was a really nasty attitude. That person shouldn't be in that, that kind of job. He's, I can call him a racist. I mean, I got a proof of, you can talk with certain people. One time was an incident with Mrs. Cruz from 157 Horace Street. Eighty-two-years-old lady ended crying because she don't have no water, and it was all that problem, it was an outfall. It wasn't inside her house. And Mr. Levenbergh remembered that case, would I really present, you remember the video? I shouldn't, well, anyway, I have all the videos on there. Everybody loves a memory of the things, you know.
Your time's up, sir.
I'm sorry?
Your five minutes is up, sir.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, I would like to fully, if any long enforcement agency, any agency want to contact me, my telephone number is 732-828-2667. I used to work for the city of New Brunswick, and I would like to spoke with somebody on the long enforcement side on a high rank. I don't want to report anything more to the, to the New Brunswick Bureau of Health. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Oh, and God bless America, God bless our President Trump.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Charlie Cradville from New Brunswick. You know me well. I am not surprised to hear allegations of...
I am not surprised to hear allegations of funny business at the water utility or racism at the water utility. It's a sad reality that we have these problems here and we need the folks in leadership positions to exercise leadership and resolve those problems. One of those problems today came to my attention. Folks in Rutgers Village were having problems with their water and one of those folks actually took some water out of their faucet and gave it to me. And, you know, we, we raised attention to this on our Facebook page and somebody actually, I believe the city public information person put out a statement saying that it's okay to drink the water, you don't need to boil it. So I just wanted to ask, you know, which council member would like to start us off by drinking some of this water out of Rutgers Village?
Yes, Charlie, keep going there, buddy.
That means yes? Yeah, you'll drink it?
Keep drinking. Why don't you drink it first?
Well, I'm not, I'm not the one telling people it's safe to drink. Maybe the, could, could the person who authored it, authored that statement? Take a sip? To show your confidence in this?
Can you do that, please, sir?
That's a no, you won't drink the water that you're telling the public is safe. If, if, there's a, when there's a video of this bottle being filled up on our Facebook page, you can watch it. This is the bottle, if you'd like it. To show your confidence in, in the, in the information the city is putting out, it's truthful information, please, please show your confidence. Maybe the water director could, could take a sip? Is, is this acceptable? This is what's coming out of faucets in Rutgers Village.
There was a main break in Rutgers Village today. Let's look, play the facts out here. You seem to be wanting to forget that.
No, I want the facts, please.
Major water main break which stirs up the system, which triggers yellow water. Mr. Lavenbergh is the only one qualified to say whether it is safe to drink it or not. But let's, let's be honest, that is the result of a large water main break that took all afternoon to repair. Why didn't you start the story with that?
Did you know about the water main break, Mr. Cradville?
Yeah, that's my understanding. And I, I know that the city, I know that the city told people it's okay to drink this. So did Mr. Lavenbergh make that statement? Did Mr. Lavenbergh okay that? He said to tell people it's okay to drink it. Or am I mistaken about what the city said?
Anybody want to talk with Mr. Cradville on this?
I, I agree with you, I agree with you. And like Mr. Lachlan said, we, we had an extremely large water main break today at Onvorhees, near the intersection of Pennington. We had a lot of issues tracking down the actual location that we were there. If anybody was out to the site, we had two rather large holes. Several services had to be replaced as well. It's quite common knowledge in the entire country, this is certainly not unique to New Brunswick, that there's a very aging infrastructure that is, that is an issue. It's, it's a lot of pipe that dates back to Cavill College. Certainly Rutgers Village doesn't date that far back, but I think probably Harry Truman was maybe in office when, when the pipe went in. It's made of cast iron, okay? There is iron that builds up on the inside of every water main in the entire country. And when there's a major water main break, everything that's on the inside gets stirred up. The question, in fact, is what can we do about it? What kind of notification do we need to put out there? Okay? It's iron that's in the water. Yes, it can be drunk, but who's going to drink water that's that discolored? Nobody. But it's going to clear up, okay? I'm happy to report that the main was just fixed. I just got a text message that, you know, everything's back online, all the houses are reconnected and, and the work is done. But it takes time for it to, to settle down. So we always advise run the water until the water clears up. And if you run the water, it will clear up. We do put out an advisory because iron, I don't make up these rules, okay? Is a secondary contaminant. So it doesn't mean there's a health effect related to the ingestion of iron. I'm not saying we're going to drink it, but we're also putting it out there. It's a secondary issue. Don't wash your clothes. If you have white shirts, don't wash your clothes, okay? That's why we put that out, we try and get it out as best we can. This started as a very small problem today, but it turned into be a much bigger problem. Again, it's part of the infrastructure. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you. I think the city ought to revisit its practices for what to do when you have a main break in terms of public notification and putting out the information because all that information was not in the notice that went out today. And I, quite frankly, I think the notice was late. It came out after we had already put out the video of somebody getting this out of their faucet. So I think the city could do better. And I have to ask about some things that are going on. Is it true that in 2013, a police officer was suspended for 135 days for a truthfulness violation, specifically providing false information in an I A investigation?
We'll have to get back to the, to Mr. Cradville. We don't have any, police captain's not here to see you.
So no one's here to represent the department?
That's correct.
No law enforcement tonight?
That's correct.
And they gave the night off?
Do you see him here, Mr. Cradville?
Oh, yeah. I mean, also, shouldn't the business administrator know whether a cop was suspended for 135 days?
From 2003, is that what you said?
2013.
Thirteen? What happened to you? We're going to get that information.
I'm sorry, I don't make the answer.
Yes, we don't have that information for you, Mike.
So we're not sure if a cop was suspended for 135 days?
We need to say that, we said we don't have that information.
Okay. Well, I got it from the city website and I'd like to know who it was.
We want to get that information.
Does the business administrator have any idea who that might have been? Suspended for 135 days?
No.
No?
Not at this time.
Okay. How about in 2015, August 2015, is it true that there was a cop suspended for 30 days for conduct on becoming an officer?
Any gratulation on that at this time, Mr. Lachlan?
I don't.
Well, I think we don't have, we don't recollect that at this moment, sir.
Oh, I see. So the following month, is it true, an officer was suspended for 27 days for being unfit for duty as a result of a domestic violence incident?
Mr. Cradville, we don't have these answers at the moment, okay? We, we, we'll certainly, if you put it in writing and over, then we can have the answers.
I mean, it's apparent that you don't have the answers, but I'd like to know if the business administrator knows?
No, that's the answer, Mr. Cradville.
You can get a little chewy before the meeting starts and make some help.
Excuse me, excuse me. Please, don't, don't, don't interact with him, okay? I gave you the answers.
I'll follow up.
That'll be great.
Uh, is, has Dale Walker resigned?
Not since the last meeting.
Okay. Uh, is the city aware he's, he's pled guilty to fraud?
Are we aware?
I was not aware.
We're not aware.
Okay. I, I have to double check, but I'm pretty sure he did. And so that would mean two firefighters this year pled guilty to fraud. Mr. Newsman and Mr. Brown, still facing charges of theft by extortion, still suspended without pay. Is that correct?
Mr. Lachlan?
Suspended without pay, that is correct.
That is correct, sir.
And already mentioned, Mr. DeBonis and Ortiz, both suspended without pay because of their criminal charges. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, I think that if all this doesn't prove that the city has a severe problem with corruption, I don't know what will. And I think that the city should investigate, the city councils should do everything in their power to fight this corruption. And you can create a committee of the whole that would have subpoena power that could investigate corruption in City Hall. And I encourage you to do it. You, you told me no. Uh, will you reconsider? Is this, is this something you would do? Or do you not want to investigate the corruption?
I'll prepare the answer. Time's up, Mr. Cradville.
Okay.
Thank you. Time's up, sir.
One last thing. The, the city's been in making false statements about me and I just want to, I just want to say that the, the mayor's office, I guess the mayor's not here and nobody's going to be accounted for. But the city is trying to make me look like a criminal and they are the ones going to be criminals.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Thank you.
Just give me more.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
I'll talk to them after the meeting.
Yes, anybody else like to address the council this evening? Anybody else like to address the council this evening? Yes, Ms. Carlotti? Yes. Do wish everybody a happy and healthy New Year?
I'll say.
Say, roll call, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
One last time, aye.
Councilmember Escobar?
Aye.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Aye.